Could, you know, not totally outlaw the use, but would be very, very limited in what we would allow.
I have, to get my head around what could possibly bring this to Center County in general was, I started doing the numbers about how I thought, why people would want to do it, and it's, it's pretty lucrative. So right now, if you owned 100 acres and you were leasing it, you'd get $130 an acre. That's all they pay. So that's $13,000 a year. Now, according to the webinar in Pennsylvania, you can get about $830 an acre. So now you're making $83,000 a year. So even if you were to go out as a businessman and buy farmland, you can get farmland around here for about 6,500 unapproved farmland. So you'd have to pay $650,000 for it. But if you took that on a 30-year mortgage at 3.5 financing, that'd be $36,000. You'd still make a profit of $47,000 by buying the land and just doing the business deal. So it is very lucrative and there will be pressure because why wouldn't you want to do it?
That's a helpful, that's a helpful economic analysis.
I think it's common. You know, it just makes sense. If I had money and could pull and strike a deal before I bought the land, I'd do it because at the end of it, I'd still own the land. What a great investment. You know? And big 47, and that was one of my point about how are you going to taxes? It's not farmland anymore. It actually makes a pretty good profit.
Jeff, it's not farmland anymore and you do own it at the end, but remember it's not farmland at the end.
I guess not, but it could be turned back into farmland.
Because they've got to, you know, dig down and get rid of that. All that wonderful topsoil is, is likely to be gone.
No, I don't think so. I think they just drive steel posts in the ground. And actually, what I read in the webinar, it can actually be a soil improvement because you can, well, you can have a monstrous 100-acre butterfly garden or you can plant alfalfa in between, which is nitrogen bringing to the soil. And at the end of 120 years, if you haven't done too much, you've just made an organic farm once you remove the solar panels.
Well, there was conflicting information with respect to that.
Yeah.
There was, and there's, there's a fair amount of conflicting information in general, I must say. In terms of how, how much of this is even in the pipeline? You know, I, I don't, I don't see the kind of numbers that, I listened to the webinar. I thought the young lady did a great job and was, and was well-informed and, 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 and very articulate. But when she got to the numbers in terms of how, how many projects were in the pipeline, I don't know, I'm having trouble seeing that out there. And she might be right. I mean, she's, it's her business. So.
Yeah.
I think, I think, I think what, 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 what Chris and Bob are talking about is a really important question. It's really, it was right at the top of my list from what I read through was, was, you know, after 20 months on the small area plan committee, there was nothing in terms of visioning that came up, you know, anything like this. You know, this, we had made reference to it in our last meeting and there's references to it in the material that was since handed out. I mean, it's a light industrial use. And with that in mind, is that a vision for Harris Township?
Hey Todd, so on this same thing, to me, it's, it's similar to what you guys probably did for cell towers. I mean, how are you, how did you deal with cell towers? Nobody wanted them either, but of course they came and then you must tax them some way. And you also must have something in the books to take it all down when they're, you know, not in use anymore. But that land is now not ag because it has a cell tower on it.
And the cell tower process was completely different. That was, that was something in the mid to late 90s, I believe. And there was a regional, there was a regional panel of zoning officers and planners that met occasionally to develop a model ordinance for how municipalities would handle cell towers. And in the end, everybody sort of took the model ordinance and, you know, tailored it to what their municipality thought was appropriate. Some people allowed the cell towers only in commercial and industrial areas. Some people, I think, limited the cell towers to arterial corridors. And the, you know, the more rural townships like Harris Township thought that there was probably not enough land available in those particular areas to be effective as, as a cell tower site. So we allowed them in our rural areas. There was really no discussion, in my memory, about the use of the property being altered permanently because cell towers by definition only take up a small area. They, there's usually a small lease area that's two, in my experience, it's two or three times the size of the base of the cell tower to allow for the equipment panels and, you know, fencing so that people that work on the towers can pull in there, do their work and come and go back out. I, I don't know that we talked at all about the fact that at some point, cell towers have a shelf life and they're going to go away. On the contrary, the ordinance is all planned for co-location of multiple users on cell towers. And the eventuality that the technology would improve so much that perhaps cell towers would house way more beneficial facilities 20 years from the 1990s than they did then. So I, I think, I think, I think solar projects and cell towers were appropriately, as it turns out, viewed differently. I think one of the things that the lady who did the webinar that you had a chance to view said is, a lot of these things that people are taking relatively strong opinions on one way or another, such as, you know, stormwater, how does that affect the, the farm property? And, and is it a farm afterwards? She, she was clear to say that those things are still under study. They're relatively new questions. They're studying them. They don't have any definitive answers yet. Our own engineer has told us that there is a factor that can be worked in, that it's, that it's not, if you have 50 acres of solar panels, it's not the impervious calculation of a 50-acre building, but there is a factor that you work in. So there will be stormwater that has to be done. There will be impervious surface that has to be accounted for. So I think, I think the ecological and the, the other impacts that we've been talking about of, of solar facilities are much greater than cell towers would ever be.
And I will, I will mention real quick. Go ahead, Chris, sorry.
I, I just wanted to give, to give Bill some orientation here. Bill, we started, we actually got into page four of Todd's, excuse me, March memo, but, but took a step back to just make sure that in terms of the vision for the township, you know, more from a planning conception standpoint, that we were, that we had a discussion of that first before we got into some more, some more detail. So it really is, you know, how, where in the comprehensive plan does this, does this fit? And then we can proceed to drill down to a little bit more of the detail. So that's where the conversation has been going. And most of us have, have piped in here at least once. We will still want to hear from Amy if she has thoughts on that and, and Jackie too. But sorry, Mark, I, I cut you off when you were about to comment on Todd's, Todd's comment.
No, no problem. It's hard with Zoom because we, we can talk at the same time and we don't know it. But what I was going to say to Jeff's question and Todd's answer about the cell towers, there has been some discussion and I will actually be joining our sustainability planner at the CRPA and giving a presentation here in October to the Cog Transportation and Land Use Committee and the Center Regional Planning Commission about possibly doing a model utility-scale solar ordinance for the Center Region because really the only municipality that permits these uses right now is Patent Township and College Township in one, one district. But Patent Township is the only municipality that really allows them in multiple places and they don't have much in the way of regulations. But when you look at the region, clearly Half Moon Township, Ferguson Township and Harris Township are probably the most likely places where we would see these types of uses being proposed because of the amount of farmland that we have. Certainly College Township could see a little bit as well. But I think the idea of having a model ordinance and really talking about the appropriateness of these uses on prime ag soils and things is what this model ordinance would get at. The only thing I would mention kind of in relation to your policy question, just a question back to, to you as a planning commission, the, the comprehensive plan does have information about supporting renewable energy, but I think the only comprehensive document I can think of for Harris Township that's specific is what we worked on for the rural districts over the last couple of years, which we did not address this as a, an appropriate rural use. So I was just going to ask, and maybe once everybody else gets their, their thoughts and what type of policy level things, would you need it from outside of the planning commission? Or, because I got that feeling from Bob, you were looking maybe for some direction from outside of your, of your particular group, but maybe I misunderstood.
No, I'm looking for some direction from outside. My concern is, and I'm not sure where I can put my finger on it exactly, but it's, you know, when the, whoever brought up the Marcella shale issue triggered the thought, okay? Because the downsides to it, people were hurt with that. Landowners were hurt with that. They, there were expectations and they were never met. And I'm not, I believe in caveat emptor and the buyer beware, but I, I think that one of the things that we have to, I don't know if we have to, but would be helpful would be to provide some way of helping to either inform or guide any large, any company that wanted to come into the area with some at least guidance on what, what we're, what our expectations as a community are. And if, I don't know that we can do that, but kind of bad, it's an ambivalent thing. It's, it's just, I haven't, it hasn't fully developed in my whole brain yet.
So I don't know if this is helpful or not, but I had a conversation with Glide Path, Carl Jackson from the company, that was the, one of the gentlemen who gave the presentation at the Fire Hall and they're interested in doing a project in the township. And he was asking sort of where we are in our process and I had sent them the link to the August meeting to watch so they could hear kind of what we were talking about. And he asked me, he said, but if this were houses? And I said, if these were houses in our rural zoning district, you would leave 50% open space and they would be on a minimum lot size of an acre. And he said, oh, and like a light went off? Like I think he really thought we were treating this differently. And I stressed to him, I said, look, we've been the fastest growing municipality in our county since 2014. We've grown like 23%. We're very sensitive to preserving and conserving land. And I mentioned the conservation design stuff that you guys worked on. So I think now he has a better sense of kind of where we're coming from, which is we're not just looking at like some, some smaller places in the state that don't have zoning or don't have very much zoning and don't have a lot of growth. They think this is the best thing since sliced bread and get them some revenue.
Sure.
And, and I think he understands kind of where we're coming. So I think the conversation for the planning commission really is, you know, this is a very emerging technology, which was the discussion point that you guys had last month, which is the same thing with the cell towers. It's kind of a good parallel in that cell towers now have changed again because 5G and some other things. And they're trying to get PUC preferential treatment so they don't have to worry about zoning because nobody really wants cell towers, right? So that may happen with solar in the future. We don't know. But I, I think we should come at this from a place of if we think this is something that would fit in Harris Township, let's start to drill down, what zoning districts do we think it should go in? Should there be a minimum lot size? Should we allow it on prime, prime ag soils? All the things sort of in Mark's memo, right? I think we, we don't want to get caught up in the 10,000-foot level. Like I think we need to start thinking about, if this is what we want to do, we need to start setting up some parameters along the way and then you can sort of refine them. That cell tower ordinance, not harp on that, but to go back to it, we did just redo that a couple of years ago and we're going to have to redo it again because everything is completely changed again with it. So I think that this is going to be very much a very similar process because the utility-grade solar is like the Marcella shale was all those couple of years ago when everybody wanted to do that. It's a very emerging thing and I think things are going to change. And I think we have to do our best, do our due diligence at this point in time, knowing that we may change things in the future.
Okay, can I, can I throw two cents in here? Since I am, since I came in a little bit late, stop me if you've heard this. Do we as a board want to encourage alternative energy sources as a matter of principle? Do we want to do it as a way of bringing income to the township? Do we want to do it as a way to provide agricultural landowners, farmers, leasers, whatever, additional income over what they can make per acre on their property right now? Or do we want to do it so that perhaps we can cover some farmland in something for 20 years and maybe bank it so that it's still around in 20 years instead of covered with townhouses? Are we, you know, why are we doing it, I guess, is the question?
I kind of agree with that. I mean, Todd would know. If we say you can't build it on prime ag land, then we don't want it in our forest area because especially in our 15% slopes, do we have any more land?
Excellent question.
I will share, Todd, if you want to, I can share my screen while you're addressing this question if you'd like.
Sure. Yeah, they're, they're not making more land. What you have is what you have. I, I think, I think there will be competing pressures eventually. I, I don't know that I, I see in my lifetime our rural landscape being covered with single-family houses, let alone townhouses, because I don't think the planning commission or the board of supervisors, at least I hope not, will ever change the zoning such that they allow that type of development outside the sewer service area. And I simply don't see the sewer service area expanding that much in the next 10, 20, 30 years, if ever, to take in all the rural area in Harris Township. So, I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's a matter of, do you feel comfortable allowing what is essentially a non-agricultural use take up potentially a lot of our agricultural land? Basically for the foreseeable future for all of us because everybody seems to, all, all the professionals seem to say that this is a temporary use and that in 20 or 25 years, the, the, the panels will be no good anymore and your decommissioning requirements in your ordinance will guide how they're removed. But it seems, it seems foolish to us as staff to imagine that a new industry won't arise from this, that reconditioned panels or reuse of existing solar facilities with even more efficient panels will, will generate even more power from the same area before too long. So I don't know that as staff, that we see these as temporary uses. If the studies that we talked about earlier come back that the, the ground is significantly affected in a negative way from the technology or any of the materials used, that would, you know, that would obviously be something else to consider. But, you know, I, I, I think, I think to answer Jeff's question, I don't, I don't see Harris Township being covered in houses. I don't, I don't see cell towers, or excuse me, not cell towers. I don't see solar panels taking the, or blocking further development in the rural area simply because I don't think the rural areas could support that type of residential development without public sewers.
I guess, I guess my question more was though, if you get rid of the forest and you don't allow it on prime ag, I'm just not sure that there's that much other land available to put solar panels on.
And, and I think that's a data, I think that's a data layer that I think Mark said that he could come up with. I, I don't know. Do you have that available right now, Mark? Is that something you'd have to come up with?
Well, what I have shown here on the screen is the location of the prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance. Now, that does not show the boundaries of our forest district, but keep in mind that there has been a new district proposed where, to replace our forest, the natural areas district. And I think that it doesn't follow it exactly, but a lot of this area that's shown in white on the north side and on the south side of the township, it's very close to where the 15% slope start in the township of what would be zone natural areas. I don't know if you can see my cursor here moving around?
Yeah.
Like this is Tussie Mountain right here. This is the ski area. This is the Aitkins property. This is Calvary Baptist Church. I mean, all of this down in here is where we would have a natural area zoning district when the rural rezoning is done. So all of our ag land is what is shown here as being prime ag. So to Jeff's point, I think if you were to take out the natural areas district and say, well, we would allow it in the ag district, but not on prime ag soils, you wouldn't have a lot left where it could be permitted. It would be limited.
So my question would be, if we, if we do that, which personally that's the way I'm leaning because I certainly don't see one in a natural areas district and I would think it should be very limited in the ag district. Can we structure an ordinance that would allow the use, but to be extremely limited? And not necessarily be challenged, you know, with a curative amendment?
I think as long as we can demonstrate that there is somewhere here within the township where the use could be supported. In addition to that, we also are participatory in a multi-municipal plan and the MPC says that if you were to be challenged, the courts and the zoning hearing board would need to take into account if any other municipalities in the multi-municipal planning area allow for the use, which as I mentioned, Patent Township allows it in probably six or seven different of their, of their districts. So I think that, I think we could, we could probably survive a challenge on our own depending on how it was crafted and what regulations you had in place because you may not choose to protect one tiny blob of prime farmland, but anything that's contiguous, you might say, you could word it in that way to restrict development. And then also having the multi-municipal aspect, I think, would, would protect us in an event of a challenge.
Can I jump in here? Question. If we're looking at, we're going to get down to the, this level of detail, I, I would be opposed to change, to allowing these on agriculturally zoned property. And simply because if we're going to allow this type of, this type of activity on the property, we should reset, the property should be rezoned to its appropriate use. But calling this agricultural, an agricultural function, I don't think is correct.
And one other thing, I think it's important to add, for those of you who did watch the webinar, for those of you who didn't, the, the lady who presented the information rightfully pointed out that if you want to allow these types of facilities in your municipality, you don't have to make it easy for compliance to be achieved. You shouldn't necessarily go out of your way to make it difficult, but if you, if you think land is worth protecting to the point that you're willing to generate regulations that make the process difficult, but fair, that's certainly an option that you have. So i- if you, if you would like to allow, as Kent said, these facilities in rural areas on a limited basis, you can apply whatever reasonable conditions you want or whatever reasonable regulations you want to make the approval process difficult, but still available.
Mark, if you could stop, if you could stop screen sharing, please, that'd be great. So the, the question to, to, to Bill's point is, you know, do we want to, do we want to conceptually say we're going to explore possible ways to, to allow solar in Harris Township? I think, I hear some pros, I see, see some people saying they do and some that maybe they don't, but let's get that question answered and then if it's yes, then we can move forward with some of these more tactical, tactical issues.
I would vote, vote yes, but I, I don't know how to word it so it would not become large scale. You know, I don't think I want to eliminate it, but I don't want to see 100-acre farm disappear.
Bill, this is, this is Paul. May I speak up?
Um, Paul, why don't you wait until the planning commission answers this question, I think?
Okay, thank you.
You know, conceptually, do you want to have this alternative energy sourcing, even a possibility in Harris Township moving forward is the question? It's not a vote, vote, but let's, let's all weigh in here so we know if we're going to stop this or we're going to move ahead.
I believe we should.
Okay, thank you.
I believe we should.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
I do too.
I would, I would go on record as saying I don't see it as part of the vision of Harris Township. And I consider it light industrial and I don't think it belongs.
Chris, did you say that you're in favor of moving forward?
I am. Amy, we have heard from you.
I guess my position is I'm, I'm not the, in favor of having it compete with or be at the expense of agricultural land. And, but I don't know that that means there is no opportunity in Harris Township. And so I'm, I'm willing to see if that there are other places, other ways of considering it. But I think that given our conservation design and priority to that, it seems to compete with that concept. And so I think in general, the belief of this committee and of the supervisors is in favor of conservation design and favoring green spaces. And so that means that it has, if it's going to be workable in Harris Township, it has to be somewhere else.
I, I have another picky point about this. But if you have a farm, and I know because I went to Ag Progress Days and they sell solar panels to farmers. And you, you basically, if you just wanted to put up four acres of solar panels because you have a dairy farm and your goal is to be self-supporting on your own electrical grid. But really what happens is that you take that money and they put up another meter and you sell that electricity back into the grid and they give you a credit and then that's how it comes back. So in, in a weird sense, even though you're just doing it small scale, I mean, that's actually how it's done. So you might be, have, have plus credits during the summer and then when winter comes and you use more electricity, that's where you get your, your money back. So in a sense, it's, it's still going out on the grid, which is, I don't know how to explain it different than that, but it's kind of strange that that's what it does. If you were to put it on your house, that's what it does too. You know what I mean?
What we are arguing about is a matter of scale. That's all.
I think the difference of what Jeff is talking about is we addressed that in the accessory solar regulations that we had worked on earlier this year because that system is accessory to the farm. Whether or not they sell some power, you know, certain months of the year and then other months of the year, they have to pay. It really, there's, there's size limitations and it has to be related to an onsite use. These uses can literally be on a vacant parcel. There's no accessory use to them and they're strictly, they're just to generate power for the grid. That's it. And that's the difference between the types of uses.
Okay. And Kent, you've made your, your, if I- Um, and Kent, you've made your, your, if I could ask you to, what, you know, your views on moving forward or, or not, or not?
Well, I mean, I think the accessory use is something that's helpful and promoting solar energy. And I think that obviously we are leaning that way and going towards that. I think the large scale projects I am totally opposed to, I could see possibly allowing it, but really on an extremely limited, you know, limited basis. So something that would take up very little of a farm. So it might not even be practice. You know, the amount I'm thinking about probably might not even be practical to consider.
It might not be practical today, but in 10 years, it could be practical. So we're thinking ahead on this, right?
Yeah, I, I can think of two places that I would love to see solar panels. If, if those things ever, one would be both quarries. Uh, neither one of them happen to be in our township. But, um, if the quarry ever runs out of stone, you'll never use that piece of property again for anything else. And you know, there's, there's a dead one on the, on the back road on the way to Samus's greenhouse that they don't do for anything. That would be another piece of property that I would have no problem with, um, seeing solar panels cover. But not necessarily in the middle of a beautiful prime ag farm, but I can see a use for it in some places. I don't know how you would rate zoning to make that allowed in those type of places and not sound like you're excluding the places we don't want to see it.
Well, quarries are usually an industrial or some kind of, uh, non-agricultural zoning district. So the use, the underlying use was probably appropriate for the zoning district. And to put solar panels in an industrial district is probably appropriate everywhere. There may, there may be some quarries. I don't know the zoning of all the quarries around here, but usually Kent, do you happen to remember if the, if the quarry on the, in College Township was in an industrial zone?
Well, it's, um, it was on what was called rural residential. It was kind of a junk zone. You, you're talking about the Hanson Quarry?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's in kind of a, just kind of a weird district that, uh, but that's a mixture of every. So, but no, that's, that property is definitely, I would say is considered industrial in nature.
So can I, can I kick in here somewhere? Paul, this is Paul.
Go ahead, Paul.
Okay. I'd like to correct a couple of things if I may and get into sustainability of ag in center region. But Jeff, you had mentioned buying, uh, farmland at 6,500 acre. I don't know where you're going to buy that at Port Matilda maybe, but, but, uh, the local area is 40,000, 100,000 an acre on farmland, uh, this close proximity to, uh, Penn State, State College and, and Bollesburg. I just want to review, for instance, $130 rental that you mentioned on acreage. Now, last year I, I rented 88 acres, which comes out to 11,440. But the school and township taxes 7,300, these are kind of rough figures, but this, uh, netted out at 4,000, that's all. But that's a diminishing return because of the school taxes. You know that they're going to be going up and up and up. Now, something, uh, two, one thing I want, I would like to read briefly for you, if I may have the time. Sustainability of agriculture in the center region done by Center Region Planning Agency, July of 2019. The long-term sustainability of ag industry in the center region. And the last page is on green infrastructure. Large-scale green infrastructure projects such as solar wind farms require large amounts of land could face opposition when installed near populated areas. Due to the amount of land area required and potential for public opposition, these uses are often permitted in rural areas, including those zone for ag uses. And it goes on, but, uh, this was done, Mark, did you do this report? The sustainability of ag in center region?
Yep. That was one, that was a report that I did for, uh, as a regional planner, yes.
Okay. Was that, uh, information included in the, uh, study that is pending? Hopefully by the end of the year, the, the rural preservation, uh, the rural rezoning, I'm sorry.
When you say was the information included in it?
Was that?
Well, no, this report, uh, was after we had already more or less completed our study of the rural areas.
Okay.
Township. So it wasn't included. And this was a regional kind of a, of a document. So it didn't specifically drill down to any particular locations.
Okay. Well, it, it seems that, uh, I was thinking about it, you folks have been discussing this. How many projects that are moving along and pending right now? You know, all the way from Burke Holdens and Spring Meals, UAAJ, Rockview, Center, Center County Correctional Institute, Penn State Orchard Road Project, State College School District, Millheim Barrow, Potter Township. Uh, the 20 megawatt solar array in Potter, that went through the planning commission in March of 2020. I don't know that that's been approved through the supervisor. Do you know, Amy?
Uh, that was turned down. They went to the conditional use and the supervisors voted it down. I guess they're, the developers appealing.
Okay, yeah, because I knew the, the entrance to that property is in Harris.
Yes.
And, and so I hadn't heard anything about that. But anyway, but, but the, the thing is with agriculture zoned land is, yeah, it is slow to measure because of the expansion of State College, Penn State, et cetera. And in the close proximity, I know to my parcel of land is close to everything. And the value keeps growing, but I see a diminishing return on it. And so when you see the rural, uh, study, I could put in potentially 44 to 60, 70 homes and use in developing a sewage system onsite to take care of those homes. So it's like, things are going to happen. They can't remain, uh, this close to everything uh, as farmland and keeping it for next 20, 30, 40 years. That way it's not, not going to happen. Things are going to change in the next five, 10, 20 years here. And I think that that's something has to be accepted. So it, you can't deny everything. Uh, so I just wanted to throw those things out to you that there's a lot of things going on here. And I think it needs to be thought of with, we can't live in the past. We've got to move forward and, uh, and how do we handle it? So, I mean, there's other things I'd like to say, but I don't want to take up all the time here tonight. But, uh, because I'm heavily involved in, in the property. What do I do at my age? Wanting to sell out, wanting to retire completely. And my kids don't want to be involved as a lot of farmers don't want families involved anymore. But they would like to do something with their farmland. So what opportunities do you give them? And not just lock it out as keeping it farmland for the next 20, 50 years. But thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
I'm going to ask Mark a quick question.
Sure.
One of the things that we were talking about earlier is where we end up when it comes down to, to, uh, the pressure and how there's not a feeling that we're going to develop so much of the farmland that is left in the queue. But when I first came on the board, we were throwing around as part of the, the, um, conservation design stuff, uh, some proposals that, you know, looking at land use for development outside of the sewer boundary that were legal, but not necessarily the sort of development that we in the township would like to see. And the one map you threw at us was the Drivelbusch property, which was 200 acres, which at an acre a lot, which manages to do well and manages to do septic, could put 200 houses out there. And we were all kind of aghast when we looked at it. So if we're thinking about it as a possibility, somebody else out there is going to think about it as a possibility. Uh, I, it's, you know, just on the other side of the, of the, what used to be the Elks Club. It's prime land for development within the next 20 years. Um, I look at the solar idea as being able to give the people who own that land, as Paul is saying, uh, an opportunity to, you know, hang on to it for a while longer, bring in a couple of more dollars than what they can get in, in leasing it or, and then paying the property taxes on it. Now granted, we're going to end up having to figure out a taxing structure if it's solar goes in. But, but I'm, I'm wondering whether we are looking at this from the standpoint of 2020 and not looking at it as what we can accomplish 10 or 15 or 20 years down the road. If we build this, build an ordinance or a conditional use or something that, that will give us some time to let it happen and not mess things up.
Oh, you know, I, I think with our, our conversation that we, with Georgia's, Georgia's, um, disagreement notwithstanding that, that the, the majority do want to explore how we can, build, you know, build some, some language and some ordinances that would on a very limited basis to be determined, move forward with this. So if I, if I could offer that we do, you know, go down a little bit further here, um, tonight and into some of these, uh, more practical, um, practical issues. We're, so let me just stop right there.
I agree with Kent's concerns about the size of the project.
So.
Go ahead, Amy.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but it sounds like the majority of you are willing to move forward with discussion, that you have some concerns about this and, and the ag area and some of those sides. So let's go to Mark's memo now, since it sounds like we want to move forward. And let's start drilling down a little bit and let's see how far we get. And then of course, we'll probably talk about this again next month, spoiler alert. But let's start at least the process now. I think we're, we're getting a little bogged down right now. So let's, let's go back up a little bit. We're kind of in the weeds. Let's get out of the weeds a little bit and let's start drilling down.
And I would recommend, since, uh, I think you've at least discussed question number one quite a bit already to some degree, that maybe it might be worthwhile jumping on to question number three. Cause that would at least carve out parts of the rural areas that you might decide. I mean, I've already heard, I think at least some, some of you do not feel they belong on 15% slopes. So not in the natural areas, you know, all the open space lots that have been created or may be created as a result of residential development in our rural areas. Would they be a place where you would find these uses to be appropriate? Or would that be something that you would not, where you would not want to see them? I think is a question to consider.
But I, first of all, I think if we're going to have areas set aside as open space, I do not consider, uh, these, these, uh, utility scale solar projects as open space. And I also consider that, that, that'd be a permanent use. So I would not want them there. I'm almost more along the line of thinking that, as we were discussing a little bit earlier, maybe if we were going to think about putting it on either an ag or, um, natural areas district property, that the property would be rezoned.
I agree. I don't think they should be in the open area. The, the whole definition of having an open area wasn't covered up with solar panels.
If, if, uh, I mean, I don't know if anybody else had anything to add on that. I don't know.
I, I agree with both of the comments, but I hope that by the time we get done going through four, five, six, you know, we haven't decided that somebody has a major objection to every piece of undeveloped land left in the township.
I think depending on what you come out with, Bill, certainly by next month, we could try to, depending on what all the criteria are, we could throw out some mapping showing what it would leave, uh, as a potential for where these could go at least.
Yeah, and I'm having problems with my signal. So Mark, if you want to answer that one again for me real quick.
I was just saying that I think that depending on all the answers we get from you this evening, I realize you may not all have consensus on everything entirely the same. But whatever the consensus is on these different questions, we can provide some mapping of what land area might be able to support solar after you've carved out what, what it is you don't want them in. Because to be fair, we don't have that many open space parcels right now in our rural areas. Uh, it was more of a question of in the future, because certainly if someone puts a solar farm on a property, that would impact their ability to now develop it for, with a conservation design approach. They couldn't say, oh, that, you know, that 20 acre part of my property will be the open space. Well, no, it wouldn't work anymore.
Correct. Right.
Yeah, but we need to come out and say that.
Right.
Okay.
So I guess the next question is probably the real big one, and I think you already talked about a little bit is, would, would these uses be appropriate on prime ag soils or soils of statewide importance? And are there any other restrictions that you would want to see to protect agriculture, um, in, in particular?
What, what is the difference between prime ag land and, and ag land of statewide importance?
So my understanding is that prime ag land is, is considered, um, or it's defined by the USDA uh, as, as soils that they have identified as being suitable for agriculture. But then there's the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture has identified a statewide important farmland. And I think a lot of states do that. But my understanding is that it's just a differentiation in who classifies the land or that soil type. Those soils, I think are more or less unique to our state, which is why they're not, you know, they're not statewide important soils in Idaho or somewhere else, because they're mainly here. But they're still considered farmland that's perfect for, for farming purposes.
Okay, that's helpful.
Now, when we're talking about prime farmland, are we talking about the entire parcel, even if it slopes, even if there's, you know, where, where's the edges of the prime farmland and the, shall we say, subprime farmland within the same parcel? Uh, does that make a difference, one way or the other, in the way this is mapped, Mark?
Well, um, as far as the, the mapping goes, all we have is access to the, the soil survey data. So as far as the, the edges and whatnot, I think you'd have to get a soil scientist out there if they wanted to dispute where these edges are. But they're, I mean, they're generalized. I don't know that you can go along and know exactly. I think for the most part, they follow contour lines, uh, with an assumption that that would have some reasonable locations of where the soils would have, have been wrote into over time. But, um,
The reason I'm asking. I'm, I'm kind of looking at it from the standpoint, if you tell a farmer that he can have 20 acres of land to put a solar array in and sell power back to the utility company, he's not going to pick the flattest, nicest soil that he can continue to farm. He's going to pick the marginal stuff. And I'm wondering whether there's a way to make that distinction that if, you know, if we wish to allow it on agricultural property, uh, is, is it, is there a way to stipulate how that's determined?
how that's determined?
So um if I'm understanding your question, are you referring to a farmer doing this as an accessory use or as a utility scale use?
Utility use, as a utility use, that somebody were to come in and say, we need 12 acres or 18 acres of your property in order to do this. Um, I'm sure they would prefer to put it on the flattest, most accessible spot. But, you know, does does the farmer have any say in the matter, I guess, that, you know, I mean?
Yeah, I would think they they absolutely would. It's their land. So if they don't want to lease a part of it that they want to farm still, that would be that would be their prerogative to do that. Uh, I think the the role, the bigger question, and this again, where all these questions overlap, would you allow a property to be primarily covered with panels? Because if if not, then I think it gives the farmer a a little more say in where the panels go, but it it's just it's absolutely up to the farmer. And but I think the township basically easily also say that if it shows on the USDA DA mapping as being prime farmland or farmland of statewide importance, you can't use that if it's contiguous land of over a certain amount or something like that. If that was something that the the planning commission felt was important.
What do you as staff have the thought, have thoughts on this ag, this prime ag land statewide important ag land issue?
I think that since we think farmland preservation and conservation is important in this township, we shouldn't allow it on prime ag's land. That's my two cents.
That's helpful. Thank you. Mark, Mark and Todd, what do you guys say?
Well, I think that the, uh, as Amy said, you know, looking back at how we've even constructed our conservation design regulations, the open space lot needs to include prime farmland. That's one of the things that they have to do in that yield planning phases is carve out those natural resources on the property and conserve them uh as part of their open space. So I think that is consistent with how we've discussed future development in the rural areas over the last seven to eight years.
Yeah, and I would agree. I mean, I I I think it would be easy to make several arguments as to why if we're going to allow these things in uh rural zoning districts, why it ought to be very limited along the lines of what Kent was talking about because of slopes, because of soils, because of conflicting land uses. I I I just think that the ag, the prime ag soils are just part of the ammunition to use in making that argument.
Back, back, if I may say, back to inconsistency with the vision.
So is that a node of prime ag soils then? I'm seeing shaking of heads.
Seems so.
Okay.
Okay, so I think the, you know, the next question that I think the planning commission should consider is, uh, and maybe this is a two-part question. But, you know, how large of a property you think, what should the minimum lot size be for a property for them to even be able to develop a utility scale solar system? And related to that, I think, is the question number five is how much of a property do you think is appropriate to be covered with one of these systems? As I mentioned, a lot of these projects that I looked at that are existing or proposed, it was like 75%, 80% of the lot is covered. The only thing that's not covered are the access roads and the buffers that might be required around the edges. The rest of it is just solid panels. But as Todd mentioned in that the webinar talked about, you know, you don't have to just say, you can put this use here and and maximize as much of the land as you want. You can restrict it to say that, well, you could allow this on a 50 acre parcel at a minimum and no more than 20% of it could be covered with with panels. Uh, and then stipulate where those panels could be in terms of setbacks and buffer requirements and not being on prime ag land. So I think those two questions go hand in hand is how much of a property do you think should be allowed to be covered? And then how much property should someone need to have before they could establish a use like this?
I think I'll start because I'm thinking in the opposite direction. I'm not I don't think, I'm not concerned about a minimum lot size. Or on the percentage, I I wouldn't even be opposed. If there is an appropriate place to put one, I would not be opposed to subdividing out 10 acres and covering it. But, you know, so I'm, but I'm, but I'm more concerned about the size, the overall size of the project. I think there should be a maximum amount of acreage that could be allowed for a project. But but if we if we had a good spot, I, you know, if there is a, you know, 15 or 20 acre lot somewhere where it was perfectly appropriate, I would not be opposed to covering the whole lot.
Well, along those lines, Kent, let me throw this out, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but under the new rural regulations that are proposed, at least in the agricultural zoning district, you wouldn't be able to create a new lot less than 20 acres in size, would you?
Correct. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, I am, I am opposed to them being anywhere in in the natural areas district. And I'm still looking very limited in the ag district.
Nail that down, I think. I I I like the fact that Kent said that. We haven't nailed down the fact that we want to eliminate the possibility of deforestation for this stuff. I'll call it.
Well, I'm for that. I do not believe that we should be cutting down trees or be on 15% slopes. As you were just asking for trouble. And prime ag should be preserved. We've been talking about it ever since I've been on the planning commission. But I know that there's got to be some parcels out there that, you know, I'm I they're pieces of crap and you can't grow anything out of them anyhow. So I don't know how you can zone or break that down to still allow that. You know what I mean? And I don't see any problem with doing it there. I don't know if anybody's going to come a-knocking for 10 acres out in the middle on a rocky hill. But at least we wouldn't be zoning it out.
I I too like the idea of a maximum uh acreage for this, keeping in mind that down the road as as uh technology improves, a project could squeeze more energy out of a given area. 10 acres now might be marginal for you for a utility scale, but in 30 years, 10 acres could could be very productive. We we just don't know what's coming that way. So but to limit it to a maximum size to me makes sense. I don't know what that is. Just it makes sense conceptually to me.
I will just mention, putting on my non-solicitor legal opinion hat here for a second, that maximum sizes of these projects, the only thing I would be a little worried about with that is trying to have some logical nexus as to what the end purpose of a maximum is. It could be considered some arbitrary that we're saying 10 acres or 20 acres is the most you can do. That's why a lot of them, it's better to say no more than this percentage of a property and has to be at least this size because it at least restricts things from getting too big. If there's a public purpose, though, that we can show of why we're doing 10 acre max or whatever, then it could be feasible. I just, I'm not certain off the top of my head. It would be something you'd have to develop to make sure there's solid backing for why you're saying no more.
That makes sense. That makes sense.
May I jump in here just for a minute or a second before you get ready to close? Uh, two things I'd like to throw out. The economics of a project, small will not do it. According to, if you get five or 10 acres for solar, but they need, they all need to be near a transmission line and not where you have to run a power line down off a mountain or any distance to the transmission line to West Penn Town. One more thing, though, that never been discussed that I can remember of. To keep uh ag zone land and keeping it that way for in perpetuity, if that's the case, nobody's ever discussed the tax reduction on regulated farmland such as what's happening. And why shouldn't Harris take a lead to have a tax reduction on farmland? And that's what's killing the farmers is the darn taxes. And as they increase, as I mentioned earlier, when I only netted out like $4,000 on 88 acres, it's hardly worth even thinking about. So and I know that's an almost impossibility, but tax reduction on farmland could be a a way to to help things happen like that. Won't happen, but I just wanted to throw that fast idea. And thanks for your time tonight.
So just on the tax question, most of the farmland in the township is in clean and green. So they're paying 50% of what they would pay. And then when it comes out of clean and green, they have to pay the back taxes. Because the idea.
But Amy, that is long term. If if a young family and they want to keep the land for 50 to 100 years, that's fine. But if a retired farmer that the the family has left the farmland and he wants to sell or whatever, he would not want to put in cleaning green. It takes seven years to keep it there before you can retain that taxi, that proper taxation. I mean, it, I had to pull mine out over on on the other piece of property I had years ago. It cost me a fortune to do that. But again, that was when before the real estate market collapsed. And I was able to do that, but it was like a 60 some odd thousand dollars to pay back the taxes. So depending on the timing, like everything else, of course, Amy.
Right. I was just making the point that most of our farmland is in clean and green. So they're paying 50% of their taxes.
So can they be in clean and green and put solar panels all over it?
No.
No, they have to have the project removed. Matter of fact, the property in Potter Township that was proposed was in clean and green. And I believe the developers were going to pay the back taxes to allow that to go forward.
That's interesting.
So I think we were still, or at least I was still, from a staff's perspective, unclear. I know Kent gave his opinion on, he didn't have a concern with 100% coverage, but you know, maybe maximizing or having a maximum size for these. And and again, that is possible. Potentially, if we had a public purpose that we could demonstrate and defend, I guess, did anybody else have any other other thoughts on the on a minimum lot size requirement or a um and a maximum coverage amount on on these or for these projects?
I I guess I'll just chime in again on as far as um a reason for putting a maximum size on it would be just from the standpoint of land disturbance. And I I I consider that this would be a permanent land disturbance that would not likely uh be restored any more than a quarry can be restored. And uh, and that, you know, you know, based upon our goals in Harris Township, we we would want to limit the size of of a project. And I and I and I do recognize that'd be difficult because, you know, what if somebody got, you know, 10 properties together and did 10 projects to to increase the size. I mean, we'd have, it'd be, we'd have to write it up in such a way to try to stop that as well.
You said there was the one example I cited in the memo. I don't know if anybody noticed the comment. There was the one in Adams County, Mountjoy Township, that it was 1,000 acres, but it was on 23 or 26 different parcels. They had spread it out over multiple parcels to uh to get that 1,000 acres.
Mark, do you know whether or not they have any kind of issues as far as uh open space on a parcel? Or as Todd was talking about, whatever the algorithm is for for um permeable versus impermeable surfaces?
I didn't look that closely because uh, to be quite honest, their approval process was quite strange, in my opinion. They allowed all of these as accessory uses to the to other uses on the property, knowing full well that they were going to generate far more power than would ever be needed for the actual use itself. Um, so and it was in an area with a lot of prime farmland, very close to the Gettysburg battlefield. So it was highly controversial. But it was a unique way of saying, well, these are just accessory uses, but we're okay with them pumping out most of the power onto the grid.
So do we look at this from the standpoint of our soil, water runoff permeability, that sort of thing, and our open space requirements per lot being the controlling factor?
I think you certainly could. I mean, to be consistent with other uses in the district, Todd, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but most most of our rural uses require rural uses, when I say that, this is obviously a light industrial use. But I think most of our uses that require a large amount of land area in our rural districts, it's a 10 or 20% maximum coverage. So, uh, you know, allowing more than that would, I think, be inconsistent with what we've been doing. And a lot of that is to protect from runoff and 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 just have it to be at a scale that's consistent with the rural areas.
So do we consider that kind of a, let's hang on to that idea and and then move on as far as, you know, maximum size of a project?
We certainly, I think there's multiple avenues we can explore here. Um, I can certainly try to look into what Kent suggested in terms of maybe looking at the land disturbance as a good reason for this to be limited uh to a maximum, maximum overall size.
Because there's going to be a runoff issue no matter what you do. There's going to be some land disturbance no matter what you do.
Sure.
How do you, how do you do it when it's one town, you know, not every farm is all in one township either?
Well, it really comes down to whatever the um the zoning district is for the for the municipality where the development's taking place. So the example that was given earlier about Potter Township and the project out there and how the property was partially in Harris Township, they couldn't develop any of the the Harris Township portion with with solar panels because we don't permit them.
So I mean, we basically can just think about how, where this is going to go, and it's going to go down on 45 next to where the the grid station is. So if you look at those farms there, are they all in Harris Township or are they partially in Ferguson?
Um, well, I think it could go on either the east or the west, west side. And and really, I don't know how close the substation proximity issue is. I think it's more of a a transmission line question. Because if there's a large transmission line nearby, chances are there's a substation close enough. But I think certainly on the east side of the township, there's a substation over there off of Sherr Road. And you're right, off of Shingle Town Road, there's a substation. So most of those farms uh along 45 on either side are located entirely in the township. Um, there are some that are in multiple, uh, you know, Potter Township and and Ferguson or College as well.
So I mean, I'm just thinking out in my head that you could say you could limit the land use, but if if you connected the dots, you could still end up with a pretty large portion. Because you could have that percentage in different townships.
Assuming the adjacent municipality allowed for it, yes.
Yes.
To me, if the 20% uh maximum coverage is already sort of a a standard or benchmark that we're we're using, why don't we, just for planning purposes, and it's all, you know, tentative, just proceed with that as a starting point for to continue to this, to the the discussion?
Sure. Can do that.
So I'm just going to throw this out there. What do we think about um kind of stopping here? What do we think about, um, kind of stopping here now and then having Mark maybe do another pretty map for you that shows kind of where we're at based on what your regulations are? And, you know, then maybe we can do maybe just a little bit more research on this maximum coverage, which I think is a very valid thing to look into. Um, and then come back next month and talk about this again. Are we feeling okay with that? I feel like we've talked about a lot tonight, so I don't want to overload the system.
Visual aids will be helpful.
George.
I do vote, I vote for that. I think that's good. And I think we're pretty much of a good stopping point, but I think we should give Mark direction. I think we heard direction, but I didn't hear everyone chime in on natural areas.
Oh, we.
I, then areas are verboten.
The, the natural area thing to me feels almost like it's self-limiting because at this point, nobody's interested in putting an installation on a north-facing slope. Uh, and all we've got left in that case is a chunk of Nittany that faces south. And I don't know whether there's more than a couple of hundred acres up there that isn't above 15% slope that would be limited anyway, right?
Well, if I could chip in here, I, I think that I agree with, with George, and I think that we ought to address that issue just simply because people can become innovative. And if we definitely want to protect the natural areas, I think we should state it.
Yeah, you're, you're probably right. Never leave anything to chance in that regard.
Well, and I, I also believe that being explicit communicates a values that are consistent with, with all the other policies that we've talked about.
Yeah, I agree. And I agree that they should be, uh, not, not included, natural areas.
That's right. And I, I, I support that position as well. That the panel should not be in natural areas.
Me too.
Agree.
Uh, I, I kind of agreed on with Ken on one point too, that, well, more than one, but to me, this still doesn't seem like, it, it seems like it's a utility and, uh, it's not agriculture. And, and I think maybe they do. And I, I do believe that if you put together a big project and it does happen, it's never going to go away. They're never going to take it down. They're just going to make better and better solar panels and it'll be there forever. So if that is the case, it should be rezoned. It shouldn't be agricultural anymore. And it shouldn't be forest, it should be industrial or it should be what it is because you're just lying to yourself if you think it's agriculture. Kent's barking agreement.
No. Yeah, I agree with that, Jeff. I mean, that's what I said half hour to 45 minutes ago. It shouldn't be ag property.
It shouldn't, it should be, then we have to consider if we're going to rezone it, then we're going to rezone it and we're going to go down that road.
Yeah.
And if it's industrial, are we opening up a can of worms for every other industrial usage down the pike?
Yeah, that's the can, that's the conundrum that if you decide to, to rezone agricultural or forest property industrial, then any industrial use that we allow in the, in the, in the township can then locate there if they can do so, uh, with their water and sewer, uh, needs met. Uh, so yeah, that, that's another can of worms that we probably don't want to open up.
At least not tonight.
No.
Ever.
Ever.
Right.
Or at least 10 more years.
We've already said, we've already said that's what it is. Not agricultural.
Yeah, it's not. It's not agricultural.
Do that.
So let's not get bogged down in it. Let's, let's, let's let Mark do more of his.
I'm bogged.
Revisit in 30 days.
I'm bogged. I'm bogged down now.
I'll take what, I'll take what everybody's given me here this evening. I'll come back with, with hopefully some more mapping and I'll add the streets this time just for you, George, because you asked so nicely. And, uh, um, you know, I'll put together that and maybe even examples of some properties of, you know, some farms in the township, just what it would allow for. Maybe I'll do like I did with conservation design and pick a property or two that doesn't have, uh, maybe has an easement on it that can't be developed or something, just to try to do some illustrations.
Very helpful. Chris, you want to continue with the agenda for the evening or should I take over?
Go ahead, Bill.
So, uh, I think we have our agenda for October, right?
Plus the nominating committee. You have to appoint a nominating committee in October.
Boy, people would be just lining up for that, won't they?
It's a fun job.
Okay, uh, any reports? Did anybody hear that?
Amy, you're muted.
Thank you. I thought I clicked it. Um, CRPC, uh, we met September 3rd. You received the summary of the meeting on September 10th. So check your email if you're looking for it. The brief, uh, summary is that there are a lot of bike events being conducted both online and in person. And there are a lot of things to engage with. If that is of interest, there's a lot of sort of stretching out of events, whereas they might've been a one-off event, they're now, uh, extended. But, um, uh, there's a lot happening. We also heard a lot about what was happening at Penn State and the development of the master plan. It was a long presentation. There's a lot of projects that are in the pipeline that are happening and, um, the, the list was rather extensive and, uh, these are all projects that will be wrapped up within five years. Primarily because they've been funded and they are in motion. So there are a lot of projects that have been slowed down, but there are lots, lots of projects that are happening and will continue to be happening. Um, we also discussed the amendment to remove the corridor overlay and permit use of smaller, um, properties. And this is along the Benner Pike. And so you might, if that is of interest, take a look at, uh, the details. And that is it.
George, anything? Yeah. Yeah, the technical, uh, meeting of the CCMPO met on the ninth of September. We had a, yet another state college area connector presentation. This is my fourth version of the same.
Much ado about nothing.
There. They do it somehow with more acronyms since it's the technical committee of the CCMPO. But, um, the common period has ended on the 14th for, uh, the long-range transportation plan. Tomorrow night, that will be voted on by the coordinating committee. It was re-discussed and tweaked somewhat by the technical committee in our meeting on the ninth. There was a discussion that the CCMPO is going to put forth a strategic plan, which is something they currently don't have. But in light of soon-to-be staffing reconfigurations, it's felt that they should have one, uh, which I'm in full agreement with. Their proposed budget for 2021. And, uh, that's all I got. Recent actions by the board.
Board heard a presentation from UAJ. UAJ would like to put solar panels on people's homes, but right now DEP is not okay with that. So they're still working on that. And then they approved the Rocky Ridge Section Five preliminary subdivision plan.
Why, just briefly, why does UAJ want to put solar panels on individual residences?
Uh, UAJ wants to take nutrient credits for doing that, but the problem is, um, the solar panel stuff is in a separate permitting area than what UAJ is permitted in. So DEP has said, no, you can't do that. So they're trying to work that out right now. But I guess from what Corey told the board, Corey Miller, they'd like to find 300 houses and finance, basically UAJ would finance it and then the property owner gets to own the panels after 25 years.
But they're no good after 25 years.
Yeah, there's, there's some, there's some issues that need to be worked out. Plus UAJ is a sewer authority, so they're not really a solar authority. So there's, there's a lot of things that have to be worked out.
It caught, it caught my eye when it was on the agenda. Just, I couldn't connect the dots. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, before we bog down any further, is there anything else for the good of the order?
I move we adjourn tonight's meeting.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all very much. We'll do this again.